I'm now called to order the July 1, 2025 School Board Meeting of the Stanwood and Mano School District Board of Directors. Board Directors President R. Schreiber, King, and Murray. Today, we are offering two opportunities for the public to speak. Comments specific to the consent agenda will be allowed prior to the vote on those items. Citizens who have submitted a request to speak during the public comment section of the agenda will be called upon to make their comments at that time, which is near the end of the meeting. Would you please stand for the flag symbol?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the agenda before you for the July 1, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the July 1, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting as written? Moved by Director King.
Second.
Seconded by Director Murray. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. That passes unanimously. The Board has had the opportunity to review the June 17, 2025 Regular Board Meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the June 17, 2025 Regular Board Meeting? Moved by Director Murray. Seconded by Director King. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. That passes unanimously. It is time for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. The first item on the Superintendent's Report is the donations, which you can see on the screen in front of you. A healthy list of donations, which I'll just say once again, we're very appreciative of our community for continuing to support students and staff in the number of ways you see before you. The first donation is $1,058.40 from the Stanwood Elementary PTO to cover Stanwood Elementary Transportation Field Trip costs to the Imagine Children's Museum and Arrowhead Ranch. Second donation is for $1,548.20 from the Twin City Elementary PTA to cover the TCE School Transportation Field Trip cost to a number of places. North County Fire Station, Andrews Hay Farm, Cack Quankin Roof Farm, Riverside Lanes, and Freedom Park, all different grade levels in which they participated in. Number three is $14,429 from the Twin City Elementary PTA to assist with the cost of Twin City Elementary Fifth Grade Camp at Camp Seymour. And I just want to call out our appreciation for this large donation again, which will be ever more important as funding from the state for outdoor education is no longer available. Four is $887.80 for the Cedar Home PTO to cover the Cedar Home Elementary School Field Trip Transportation cost to Imagine Children's Museum. Number five, $757.40 from the Friends of Comino Island State Parks to cover the EBE School Transportation Field Trip to the Comino Island State Park. And finally, number six, $1,713.25 for the Stanwood High School Band Booster Club to cover transportation cost for the band field trip to the famous Apple Blossom Parade. So, thank you to all of our donors. We appreciate the support in what you can see is a number of different ways in and for the district. Next up on the Superintendent's Report is Ruth Floyd, who will present the 2025-2026 Budget Development Update and Summary Report.
Good afternoon. Our Budget Development Update is for the 2025-2026 Budget, and we encourage engagement in every aspect of our system, including the budget. And this is done through our monthly budget updates to you and the community, as well as our community advisory, budget advisory committee meetings. The budget cycle is before you, and we are actually currently at the bottom of that cycle. And our community, and this includes community feedback that was provided throughout the year for our budget advisory committee, from our budget advisory committee. And I'd also like to thank Bill Swernogen, who is here. And he and the fiscal team are integral to this process that you see here. And we have completed the draft budget that's attached to the agenda, and we will continue to refine it, and we'll let you know of any changes during the budget hearing process. Moving up to the top, the Board will have the opportunity to adopt the budget in August, which sets the expenditure capacity, or what we call appropriations, for each of our five budgeting funds. This is a plan that provides flexibility to make adjustments throughout the year, beginning with the fall, when we know actual enrollment. But the budget is a plan. This is our adoption process and timeline. You can see there are the state laws that govern our budget process and the advertisement dates, as well as the Board meeting on August 19, when the budget hearing and adoption. General Fund, I'd like to start out with enrollment, because that is such a significant portion of the revenues that we receive from the state. We're budgeting $4,807, including Running Start, Open Doors, and Transition to Kindergarten. You might note on Transition to Kindergarten, there's an asterisk there at the bottom. Beginning in 2025-26, the state legislature has limited our enrollment that we can submit to, it's capped at 37 FTE. So, even if we have additional sections or additional enrollment, we will only receive funding for that 37 FTE. It was capped at the prior year enrollment, but the time at which they kind of looked at that amount that they were capping us at, we were at 37, and they also rounded down, so that's why you see that one difference. As you can see, the total is about 16 FTE over the prior year. And elementary enrollment is expected to decrease, and then high school is anticipated to increase. And as you know, we're kind of having that bubble that's going through the system. Next is revenues, and all categories of revenues are expected to increase except local non-tax. The non-tax local reduction is mostly due to food services at the elementary schools, where there will be fewer parent-paid deals. And there is an increase in state general purpose, or I'm sorry, in state special purpose, because the state will fund those additional two schools. And so, that's why you see a reduction in local non-tax, and there's another increase in state special purpose for that shift. And then, here's a graph that kind of shows the percentages of all the different categories as a total of all of our revenues. And revenues in total has increased about 5% as expenditures have as well. And you can see the majority of our funding does come from the state with significant and noteworthy, over 16% coming from our local levy. And we look at expenditures in a couple of different ways. This is a program summary. And the changes accommodate salary increases as well as enrollment changes. You'll note that the budget, we're comparing this to the budget for 2024-25, but we did have an enrollment increase in 2024-25. And so, you're not only seeing that increase for cost increases, salary increases, but also the enrollment increase that occurred during the year in 2024-25. That also applies to the state special education, as well as other categorical. And you'll note that other programs, although the dollar amount isn't much, those percentage increases quite high. And that is related to community donations for school supplies from the Smolisch County Area Foundation, as well as insurance reimbursements. The state has said that we needed to move any insurance reimbursements to other sources rather than a basic education cost. So, that is that difference. It's just a shift, and there's a revenue offset for both of those items. And then, a graphical way of looking at those different categories of our expenditures, percent of total expenditures. And then, another way to look at expenses is the object summary. You'll note certified salaries, classified salaries, and benefits. Those have increased with not only the cost increases associated with salaries and benefits, but also, again, that enrollment increase that we had had some offsetting expenses in the 2024-25 school year. And so, you're seeing that change as well, because our expense insurance in the area of salaries went up during 2024-25. So, you're seeing both that, as well as the 2025-26 increases. And then, supplies include additional tech devices, because some are coming to end of life. Purchase services includes Running Start. We did have a fairly significant increase in enrollment in Running Start. And so, you'll see that increased cost, it's a flow-through. As well as fuel and tires in the supplies area. And then, in the purchase services area, software subscriptions, some legal fees, risk rule contributions, and the like. And then, capital outlay, some capacity to purchase a car if needed. And here, again, is a graphical way to look at those objects. And again, the most significant portion of our budget is salaries, classified and certified employee salaries. I didn't mention, going back here, I should have mentioned the employee benefits, why that decreased. That is because retirement rates, the state reduced retirement rate. So, that is a reduction on the revenue side, as well as the expenditure side. But you're not seeing it as significantly on the revenue side, because it's kind of mixed in with all the other revenues that we receive, whereas here, it's called out specifically in the object summary. And then, to summarize our general fund, we anticipate the beginning fund balance to start the year, August, for September 1, 2025, at approximately $7.9 million. We have revenues and expenditures that both increased about 5%. Revenues are under expenditures by about $1.4 million, which is approximately what we had anticipated during our previous budget update related to the reduced educational plan. And then, leaving an ending fund balance on August 31 of 2026, estimated at $6.5 million. After taking out the restricted committed and assigned fund balance, that leaves unassigned at $5.8 million, which is 6.2% of revenues. And that is well within that Board minimum 5%. And here's a look at our fund balance trend, with 6.9% of total fund balance anticipated at the end of the next budget year, and 6.2% unassigned. These are our fund balance categories. I've spoken about these before. We legally have to restrict some of our fund balance, including unspent grants and other legally restricted items. Currently, we don't commit any funds, that's something the Board... Basically, the math after you reduce all of that from your total fund balance. And again, that includes our minimum fund balance reserve. We have four other funds that we budget, and we never want to leave them out. Associated Student Body brings much joy to our students, as we've heard from our Board student representatives. We anticipate the beginning fund balance to be about $600,000, with expenditures outpacing revenues by $72,000. And we had some conversations, Bill did, with the Associated Student Bodies of the secondary schools that we budget ASB for, and encouraged them to, you know, make sure that they spend the money on the students who are raising those funds. So, that's why you see a bit of a spend down in fund balance in the ASB fund. Debt Service Fund Summary, anticipating about $5.2 million in beginning fund balance. We have revenues that come in in the form of tax receipts, and then expenditures that go out in the form of principal and interest on two outstanding bond issues, leaving an estimate of $5.5 million at the end of 2025-26. Capital Projects, we anticipate about $3.4 million with some revenues, as well as a significant amount of expenditures for the expired levy projects, state match funded projects that we discussed. And a portion of that is also some capacity in case there's an emergency need for something like a roof or a boiler that comes kind of out of the blue, and we need to maintain some flexibility in order to respond to that kind of thing. And so, if we don't need to spend that money, we will most likely carry that over, and you'll see that, again, budgeted for the following fiscal year, because we need to maintain some ability to respond if we need to. Transportation Vehicle Fund, this, we currently have an outstanding purchase order for three buses. And so, that money will carry over in the amount of about $800,000, based on the depreciation money that we're going to get from the state on August 31 of this year. It also provides some ability, or some capacity, to purchase additional buses next year that would then be either received near the end of the year of 2025-26 or into the 2026-27 school year. But this gives us the ability to spend at least the ones that are already on order. That will arrive after September 1st. And that's all I have for you on the budget update. We will, there may be some changes to the budget. I will go over those with you during the hearing process, if there are any changes. And I'm open for any questions if you have any.
Can you talk about federal funding and what the trend has been in regards to how much federal funding we've been receiving over the last several years versus this coming year?
Yes, so, the major decrease in federal funding actually was this current year. And so, the amount of federal funds that we're planning for in this budget is about the same. And, but, keep in mind... And, but keep in mind that if something happens with the federal government where grants are reduced, then we will have to respond to that and make reductions in expenditures because the revenues will be lower than what we have budgeted here. And so we have the capacity to spend the money, but if the grants don't come, then we would respond, revenues would go down and expenditures would need to go down. Or shift the expenditures to another area of either categorical funding or find areas to maintain the expenses in this category.
So what would you say the difference in percentage of federal funding over last year versus this year?
Last year versus this year, I don't know about the percentage, but over the course of the pandemic area, we, there was about $5 million, $4 to $5 million that we had received over the course of those four, four to five years. And that has, we gradually, we had gradually been spending that. Gradually, the revenues went away. And then this year was the final year where we had no COVID-related federal funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. I appreciate your work on this as well as your team. And we can see in your timeline that this is a full year process that never stops. So we appreciate the work that your team has done on that. Next is the main financial report, which Ruth will present.
Okay, as we're planning for next year, we're also reviewing monthly our, our financial status. And this is the executive summary for May 2025. We had actual average FTE enrollment of 4,655, which is about 51 over budget and about 27, I believe, over above last year. A portion of it is paid at a lower rate due to, in May, due to districts receiving spring tax collections. And then next month, I will talk more about it next month, but the legislature provided or basically needed to decrease the amount, the percentage that they're providing in a portionment in June because of the way that their budget led, basically their appropriations is, needs to happen. And so June is the end of their fiscal year. So they actually needed to move some of the money that they gave us for a portionment from June into July. And so you will see that next month. This is the manager's report. It has about 5.6% of the expenditure budget capacity remaining after expenditures as well as salary and benefit encumbrances. And then this is our fund balance list. And monthly, May general fund balance was at 7.7 million. It's about 8.6% of total revenues. We anticipate June to be our lowest month of the year as it has been in past years. You'll see that trend on the, on the table. And then because of a portionment and the timing of taxes as well as a portionment payments. And then this is our object report, which we discussed when we went over the budget update, those salaries, benefits, supplies, et cetera. And then this is our general fund budget status. And it is, as, as we talked about earlier, 7.7 million at the end of May. And then capital projects, didn't have much activity in May, but that will definitely increase over the summer with those projects that were, you all know about. And then debt service fund reflects May tax receipts in preparation for that June bond interest payment that we will make on our bond issues. ASB, so it's typical revenues and expenditures as prior years. And then transportation vehicle fund, not much activity there. And you will see that in encumbrance, but that won't come through as expenses until after September 1st, the next fiscal year. And this is our budget capacity report. Not, nothing unusual there. Our food service program report continues to show that the budgeted overestimated state revenues. And then our, our budget average daily participation at the bottom of that as well. I believe that's all we have for May financials. Happy to answer any questions on this as well.
I'll just, I'll just say that I appreciate being able to weather issues, I'll call them, when we don't get a full portionment from the state like where the June, July pulled up. So the, this, how we've positioned ourselves to be able to weather things like that, I'm hoping to continue to do.
That is the, one of the many reasons why we want a fund balance to help you fund balance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Appreciate it. Next up, I'd like to present a brief summary of the strategic plan and the community survey that happened this March and a reflection on those two items. You'll notice the new slide template. It's year three of the strategic plan, year three of a new slide template, always reflecting our promise in the bottom left-hand corner of empowering students to learn in a safe and inclusive setting and preparing them for the future of their choice. You'll also notice that we're going to highlight growth and achievement several times today. The three stages of engagement that we've talked about the last three years throughout the strategic plan are shown before you and are continue to be focus areas within the strategic plan. Just a reminder for those that weren't involved with it, our strategic plan was developed and adopted by the board in August of 2022 and had been put from over 150 community members that are listed in the full 44-page report that you can find online if you'd like. But just to call out that these three items, these three focus areas, none more important than the other, continue to be, items we'll continue to focus on throughout the final two years of this plan as we move towards a revision in 2027. Those are student learning, instructional effectiveness and empowering infrastructure. So we would be remiss to not mention our commitments. And these commitments were developed by that, that committee that worked on the strategic plan. Some of you sitting up here today were part of that work and we still appreciate that. And that is the four commitments of early learning, engagement, achievement and future-ready graduates. And you can see that in early learning, we talk about things like readiness for kindergarten and, you know, academic competencies that, that students need in the earliest years to be prepared for the future of their choice later on. And then, you know, our future-ready graduates that have skills to be ready for the work ahead of them. I'll talk briefly about our community survey. This is the third year of our community survey that happens every March. We had nearly 500 respondents this year and wanted to highlight a few of the results that we, we found. These are going to show that the commitments that we have established in our strategic plan are still priority for the community and is what we set our feedback and focus on for moving forward as well. So we, we see that we have a satisfaction is rising, moving from 270, almost 71% of respondents satisfied with the quality of education provided, up from 67% in '24 and 64% in 2023. Performance perceptions have improved as well. Ratings for teacher quality, student safety and neighborhood school performance have all increased to over 70% of those that responded. And this really gives credence to support an opportunity for potentially combining or focusing in on goals two and three in the strategic plan that result in a more streamlined three-goal approach to the strategic plan potentially. This data supports that tightening up of those, of those goals in our next, next revision of the plan. So we have talked extensively, I would say, about the commitments and what we call the bookends. And I mentioned previously the bookend of early learning. And that is that we have students coming to school, prepared to engage from the moment they walk in the door, but also before they grade three, which is a kind of benchmark year, that they are prepared both, not only academically, but socially and emotionally as well. And have those competencies, competencies to move, to move forward. The other end of the bookend is our future-ready graduates. And we had the opportunity to see our graduates in action this past month, both at Stanwood High School and at Lincoln Hill High School. And you can see a picture of, of that here in front of you. One of the, one of the items I want to highlight as far as data, with regard to data, is the data we collected from over 170 graduates leaving the system. And that is their, their contact information. So we can really determine by contacting them at six months, one year, a year and a half and two years out, if they were future-ready graduates, if they've engaged in what their high school and beyond plan said they would and what those markers look like for them. So this is a new, a new lane for data gathering for our graduates. We do gather data in CTE in some special programs and with college board as well. But this will be a more local approach to that bookend. And you may have seen the last of the four-part series of what we have done along the way to bring data into and measure data around our strategic plan. And so we're going to play this video for you right now. And just in case you missed it or for another look at it, how that happens in the schools each day.
As we head into the final stretch of the school year, it's time teachers and students pull everything together and finish strong.
We've learned a ton to share, not science, writing, problem solving. We've grown in ways that go beyond just the grades. Teachers have been using what we've done in class and on tests to figure out what's working and how to help us finish strong. This last quarter, it's our chance to build on everything we've done so far.
Teachers routinely get together to look at data, make adjustments, offer extra support and help us focus on what matters. Whether we're ahead or still catching up, they help us take that next step.
For high schoolers like us, we know that there's more than just one way to graduate. We all have to earn credits in the high school and beyond plan. But when it comes to showing we're ready for life after high school, we've got options.
Some students pass state tests, others take college-level classes like Running Start or College in the High School. Some go to the SAT or ACT route. There are other hands-on paths too, like CTE courses, real-world projects, or even the ASVAD for military prep.
No matter which path you're on, make sure you're checking in with your counselor and keeping your grades in mind. Graduation isn't one size fits all.
This last stretch isn't just about tests and projects. It's about how everything's come together. Our teachers and staff have been planning, adjusting and building in time for review and support to make sure we're ready. We're almost there. We're going to keep going, keep growing and finish the year proud of what we've accomplished together.
Thank you. Thanks for putting those videos together, Evan Caldwell, and highlighting what's happening inside the classroom. And also highlighting the different paths that, that our future graduates have to demonstrating their readiness for graduation. The last slide, I want to look at, twist back to some feedback that we've received and the insights that our community have left us with. That is called out in the, in the middle of this page around the desire for more arts and enrichment opportunities, making sure that there's inclusive practices that calls for smaller class sizes and stronger support within those classes. And also a desire for education that honors diverse passions and not just readiness through test scores. So how do we take that feedback from our community and make an adjustment potentially to the strategic plan, which is a living document, and move forward into our final three, final two years? And you can see some of those on the screen in front of you as well. I think it provides an opportunity to tighten up goals two and three into the engagement and achievement. That could look like measuring distinctly participation in the arts and extracurriculars, growth across different academic indicators and also some student perception data, which we intend to gather from not only our graduates, but our students who are still on, on site. So this is a brief update since we're now one month away from being three years into our strategic plan and making sure that we're using our community feedback around our commitments to both students, staff and community and seeing if there's a way to enhance and highlight the goals in that last page. Any questions? Okay. It's become tradition that I have one item that I didn't put on the agenda in the superintendent's report, so I'd like to take the liberty to do that right now. And that is to acknowledge that Dr. Verica Smith is on the day one here in the district, back after a couple decades of being in the district. I just want to read a brief bio of Dr. Smith before I, before I move on. Throughout her career, Dr. Smith has led statewide initiatives in special education, MTSS and inclusionary practices. Dr. Smith will be our new executive director of special services, not to say replacing Robert Haskell, but filling that, that seat. She has worked closely with OSPI, with the Washington State Legislature and other agencies to shape educational policy, improve access and build more responsive systems for students further from educational justice. Her leadership is grounded in strength-based approach, collaborative approach and belief in moral imperative to create equitable opportunities for all learners. In addition to her extensive experience at the district and regional level, Dr. Smith previously served as superintendent in Monroe School District, chief academic officer in Pialup and executive director in MuckelTino and most recently at our Educational Services District as an assistant superintendent. And we're happy that she's returning to the Stanley Community School District where she began her career as a special education teacher. So Deke, Dr. Smith, thank you and welcome. We have some flowers for you and we just welcome you. That's the end of the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent Povinell. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Anyone in attendance may speak to the items contained in the consent agenda and only those items contained in the consent agenda at this time. This is about the portion of meeting for open public comment on items outside of the consent agenda. Open public comment is coming up soon. Are there any board directors who wish to pull any item from the consent agenda for discussion?
I would like to pull number four, please.
Number four. Any other items? Okay. Are there any people in attendance who wish to speak to any of these consent agenda items? If so, raise your hand so we can invite you to the podium. Is there anyone online? Okay. Okay, seeing nobody's hands. Is there a motion to approve agenda items one through three and five through 15? Is there a second? They moved by Director King, seconded by Director Murray, all in favor of approving consent agenda items one through three and five through 15. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And messaging unanimously. Is there a discussion on item number four?
So I pulled the YMCA contract for the swimming pool for this next fiscal year. And I would like to probably have our superintendent look into the agreed fee increases. As United Way is a community partner, I'm wondering, you know, as we are in a budget crunch... as we are in a budget crunch, why it was necessary for an increase in the rental fees of the lockout lanes? And whether or not we can adjust that.
I'm happy to look into that and report back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve consent agenda item number four?
I don't think we are approving it at this point because we need additional information from...
We can report back on that.
We can table it.
I would like, yeah, I would like to table it until we get further information.
Okay, there's a motion to table. Is there a second to that?
Just have a question or comment. It looks like the increase is about 5%, is that correct? Which is similar to the inflation, single dollars.
Is there a second to that motion to table? Is a second required to the motion to table?
Second's required, to table motion.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Okay. No second to that motion, fails.
Yeah, now we'd see if there's a motion to vote.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item number four. Moved by Director King. Is there a second to that motion? I'll say then. All in favor of approving consent agenda item number four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
I oppose.
The motion carries. Okay. There is no hold business to discuss. Public comment, citizens wishing to address the order asks to submit online requests using the public comment link on our website or via email two hours prior to the board meeting start time. For those attending the meeting in person, request forms are available in the boardroom for submission prior to meeting start time. Citizens who wish to provide documents, support records, will hand them to the reporting secretary for distribution after the meeting. The board president will call upon individuals that requested to speak during the public comment section of the agenda. Do we have any? We have no idea. Okay. New business to discuss. We have the one item, the board vacancy here. And I think you were given a proposed timeline and a similar formula what we used last time for the application.
I don't think they received that.
Oh, okay. The application to fill the board director's vacancy for District Four is basically the same one we used last time. Is there any discussion on that?
I can discuss something that I haven't received.
Well, this is just open discussion. Do you think we should add things to it or...
I don't even have a copy of it in the morning.
Okay, thank you. And we have a proposed timeline beginning, we have already confirmed the vacancy and publicized the vacancy, or announced the vacancy effective August 1st. We will then move into an application period, screen the applicants, conduct interviews in public here. And then an executive session, we will deliberate on the candidates that I can appoint. Notify the candidates and then do a oath of office and orientation probably in September. So is there any further discussion on this or so we continue to discuss? Our next meeting will be the first meeting in August.
I think this needs to be brought back forward at our next meeting, the 1st of August, when Director Evans is also here to have input. Because I don't, as far as the agenda, there wasn't a link, there wasn't information. All it said was board vacancy. It didn't tell us what we were going to be discussing today. And the fact that Director Evans is out of town at the moment, it feels very strategic in your, trying to move this forward without proper input from all board members.
Well, we're not moving it forward. We're opening it for discussion this time. There will be more discussion on it. And then we can make a motion in August on whatever timeline we want to agree on.
Okay, well, I would like to make sure that you send us whatever information that you have currently that you're talking about today so that I can actually read it.
So we will continue the board vacancy in our next discussion. Board directors, report on business conducted. I'll start with...
Can I ask, sorry to interrupt. Apologize, I just want to add for clarity. Because the director's, Director Foster's resignation is effective August 1st is, just so the staff here is clear on timelines, that we wouldn't do anything with it until there's more discussion in August.
Right, we cannot fulfill the vacancy until after the effective date of her resignation.
Right, we won't then, because the next meeting is until August 5th. We wouldn't then post for application on the 1st when her seat becomes vacant. Is that...
Well, we have to determine the timeline and the application process at our meeting on August 5th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Director Murray?
Um, yes. So I wanted to just touch base on the reason why I pulled YMCA. You know, I'm, in the community, we see a lot of nonprofits really kind of stepping up to help support school districts at this time. And so I question the YMCA in wanting to increase rates when school districts are hurting. And you're seeing the YMCA spending a lot of money in Snohomish County in general, investing in, you know, new camps, new buildings, and the like. So I'm just wanting to know if we are true partners and we're giving access to the YMCA and aren't charging monthly for building usage, why that can't be reciprocated and we keep a flat rate? I believe we should be paying for our lanes when we're using the YMCA and the resources for lifeguards and the like. But at the same time, we are partners in this work. And it feels like to some degree it's being taken advantage of. So I just want to have that question answered and see if maybe it can be revisited. Other things, I got to host a workforce luncheon learn. And actually, I wanted to thank all of our CTE teachers and counselors and staff that attended because it was all about apprenticeship programs for our youth and our pathways. And so I really appreciate it seeing all of them on the webinar. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments there. We can see of the, why could we negotiate that or make some accommodations there? But I didn't want to delay our agreements going into our new fiscal year here. Director King, comments on business conducted? And as always, Superintendent Evans, the last word.
I have a couple, obviously, highlights that I want to make sure go after today. We have a Stanwood High School student who is representing the Technology Student Association, for Stanwood High School in Nashville right now, at the National TSA Contest. It means Poppy Hanson. And Poppy was placed third place in the nation on an event called transportation modeling. So congrats to her. That's not an easy feat by any stretch of the imagination. So we all deserve recognition for her work. And, you know, it may be a genetic thing because her dad is the TSA teacher at the high school. So it's just a great representation of Stanwood High School and the community. The other thing I'd like to point out is I just received before this meeting an email from Superintendent Raekdahl. And this letter is addressed to me in the district and it celebrates the Washington State Patrol's annual bus inspection. And for the past two years, we've met the strict criteria to receive this letter of achievement, which means that we passed at a rate of 100% of our buses. And that work goes to, you know, that celebration goes to the whole team at transportation, but namely our transportation supervisor and our mechanics who are in the shop. If you're ever down there during inspection, you know, it is taken very seriously. And the amount of times that you hear of safety is our number one priority with regard to our buses and our fleet is not just something that's said. So congratulations to that team for making sure that our fleet and our buses are safe. And it's nice to be recognized by OSPI and the State Patrol as well. Lastly, I just want to call out, if you're driving around the district, you're going to see lots of commercial vehicles in the lots at our schools. You might have noticed our whole fleet of buses, minus the ones that are parked out on Commander Island, in the Stanwood Middle School parking lot. That is because the part of the CFAC's decision to prioritize repaving the transportation parking lot after 20-plus years is happening this summer. That project will start on the 7th of July. And we figured those buses right there, a lot of people have eyes on them. So that's happening. Our Slade Elementary climatization project, where we're looking at the insulation and balancing of that HVAC system is currently happening to try and mitigate any future freezes there. We'll have the Cedar Home Elementary roof project starting in mid-July as well. And so I just want to thank the Capital Projects team, Jeff Jorgensen, Maintenance Department Kevin Cruz, and Ruth Floyd for overseeing that work. There's a lot happening in the district right now. So thanks to that team for seeing that through.
Thank you. And the county has promised that they will completely work on Marine Drive before our buses need to travel that way. There being no further business, the July 1, 2025 regular board meeting is hereby adjourned.